Go ahead and call this meeting to order, special meeting Shelby County Supervisors. It's Monday, April 29th. Any conflict of interest on the agenda, guys?
No.
I gave you the wrong one. I pray the next Tuesday. I don't have it. Sorry.
No. Have a motion to approve the agendas presented or any changes to it, is there, Mark?
No.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Motion by Charlie, second by Bryce. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. And a chance look over the minutes for April 23rd. It's our short meeting with our budget approval. Any changes to that, Mark?
No.
Motion to approve the April 23rd budget minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Bryce, second by Charlie. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. The reason we're here today is to address the disaster declaration with the county and get updates of what's going on and planning. Before we get started, I just got a little thing I just put together. And I was out yesterday visiting with some of the victims and how we can help and what they need and everything like that. And I just want to say God bless everybody for keeping the county safe. People must have really adhered to the warnings. I was out of state at the time. It's amazing all the destruction and there's no fatalities. It's totally amazing. And so kudos to everybody. You guys in particular getting the message out and helping, please thank you. So much appreciated. I want to credit everyone for the due diligence, like I said, with adhering to the warnings, keeping serious injuries and losses of life to a minimum. My heart goes out to all the residents and families directly impacted by the tornado. Totally devastating to say the least when you go out there. People are in shock yet and really don't know what to do, but I never heard one person, not one, that was feeling sorry for themselves. And they were just humbled by all the response and the volunteers. And I never asked for anybody to come and they're here and just makes you proud to live in Shelby County. And so thanks to everybody and being part of that team. And we have a lot of work to do and a lot of organization to do. So I just asked everybody to please be patient because everybody that's trying to help you is on the same page. So things might not go as you think they need to go or as fast, but people are there to help. So please be patient, even the volunteers, please be patient, okay? Last but definitely not least, kudos to our EMA Director, Assistant Director, the Sheriff's Department, Secretary Roads Department. I don't want to leave anybody out. Local volunteers, just outstanding job for all your efforts. And we're going to continue to need your leadership as we move forward. And I want to read something. Been getting a bunch of emails and stuff. But here's an email I got. "I'd like to thank Alex Jordan Dispatchers, all the staff, Sheriff's Department for the great teamwork on such a large scale event. You had a lot of stuff thrown at you from every county, fire department, rescue unit, from the homeowners to the public, from the outside agencies, and you did a terrific job. I am proud to call all those involved last Friday and moving forward my coworkers, Ron Crawl, Shelby County Fire Chief and Mayor." And he says what we're all thinking, so thanks everybody. I can't say it enough. And we're going to need everybody's cooperation moving forward. So with that, I'm just going to turn it over to Alex and give us an update of what's going on and where we need help and where things are going.
Alex, so thank you, everybody. I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. So the purpose of the meeting today obviously is to get the local disaster declaration in order. This is more of a formality. We don't need this to be added to the Governor's Declaration, but it's something that we've always, we've always found in the past and it does nothing but reaffirm what we already know. I believe there was a copy that was attached with the minutes or the agenda, maybe it was.
Right, yep.
Included in the agenda, so I don't think I need to read it. So within the first 15 minutes, I think of the tornado that happened on Friday, we had a damage assessment, a self-reporting damage assessment up on the county website and our Facebook page, it was a volunteer form. And myself, I was with dispatch and doing all of our state reporting that's required. And then Jordan was out doing damage assessments and helping with responding to calls throughout the weekend. And that's kind of what we've been doing. What we found so far is about 90 to 100 homes have been affected, anywhere from minor damage to completely destroyed. And then obviously there's extensive property damage throughout other than homes. So that includes anything from fields to hog confinement, to barns, to grain bins and everything along the way. So I've worked with the assessor's office and Schneider, the GIS company, to get a rough estimate of the assessed value of the path of the tornado, which we're still working on that to get that. And then we're going to compare that with the damage, the estimated damage that's done and be able to submit that to the state to show the damage amount that was done for our area. Right on Friday, the Governor did, because of what happened in the town of Minden, the Governor signed immediately a disaster declaration for Potawatomi County and in Minden. We had equal damage as Pot County, but however, since we didn't have the O factor of Minden, we weren't included in that initial declaration. However, I've been assured by the State Homeland Security and everyone else, we will be included on any additional disaster declarations and those are to follow today, according to being told. And what that will do is it opens up any disaster assistance and disaster case management at the state level. So the West Central Community Actions, those open up for anybody who needs assistance with finding new housing or any, and then it also opens up assistance with people who are, and I forget the income guidelines, so I'll have to print those out. But once all that documentation would get added to the proclamation, I'll have all of that available for people.
Then, okay, take it to the next step. Then how do the landlord, or the landowners, the victims, residents, how do they get ahold of, so they know who to contact?
So, yeah, so what will happen is they'll, we'll open up a disaster recovery center.
We being EMA?
Not EMA, so it's run through the Community Actions. I believe it's still who it's run under because they just did a consolidation and it's run under the State Homeland Security, but I believe the Community Actions are still the ones who are in charge of it.
So they will come in here and set this up?
Yeah, so they, they still have, like West Central has the contract. So they have people in their office that will have a disaster recovery center. And if anybody needs help, then they will go, they can go in there and get the assistance that they need.
So it's somebody need to be in contact with them, letting them know this is coming?
Or? So, yeah, I haven't talked to them yet, but now that I, I just got an email from the state saying that, confirming that we will be added. Because we, they asked on Saturday if we wanted to be added to the disaster declaration, which obviously we, I responded within a minute and said yes. And then I got the confirmation that we, they agree based on what we reported, we will be added. So now I will be contacting West Central and others to make sure, as long as they are the ones doing the advocacy and everything, that they know that we'll be doing that. And then we'll get that information out to the public about where they can go once that start, stuff starts coming. And then, and what assistance will be available. To get FEMA, because I know I've had a lot of questions about when's FEMA coming or is FEMA going to be here?
They're not quick.
They're not quick, no. I haven't had much experience. My first one was with the floods in 2019. We have to hit statewide damage thresholds before the Governor can add FEMA come in.
Yeah, I've been dealt with them before and it's a slow process.
It's very slow.
Years.
Yeah, so I, I'm not, we're not there to that point yet.
No, 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 no. Everybody just needs to keep track. I'm telling this, any county department, you keep track at the end of the day, all the time you spend on this and any expenses, because that's one thing's FEMA and the state will come after afterwards. So start taking a log, anything storm related.
Yes.
Okay?
And along with that, any damages and people have been very good and great with it. We did set up, and along with Austin, he did it for us, an email address for people to send in damage photos if you were able to get it.
Awesome.
So it's tornado2024@shco.org. If you have pictures of the damage, you can email it to that website or to that email address and we can add it. Just, I just asked that you give us like an address or something so we know where it goes. But keep a note of where you're disposing of your, of your debris. So if you take it to the dump, even if you just jot it down on a piece of paper at your house, because if FEMA comes in or even the state or your insurance company, they're going to want to know, where'd you put that stuff? Because they, they want to know.
Just keep it.
Yeah, just know where, if you burned it, did you burn it on your property, did you burn it at your neighbors? You know, where'd you, you know, just keep an idea of where that is. And yeah, the documentation is a big, is a big piece of that. Making sure you keep track of your hours, keep track of what you did, all of that stuff. So we're obviously doing that for all the fire departments, keep a check of that at the dispatch center, and we're doing it for ourselves also in case there is a re-emergency down the road. And yeah, and we, we're.
When will we know like what things can be reimbursed? Because when I was out talking to victims yesterday, one thing that's come up, some of them have already been there and some of them are wanting to know how they get storage containers? Because their buildings are gone, they have all these personal items or their house is gone and they want, how do we get in, you know, storage containers or roll-offs or, and then who, can they get paid for that?
Yeah, so they, so that would be something for, once we get the disaster recovery center opened up with that, we can start asking those questions. Right now, I would call 1-800-RED-CROSS. That's the only, that's the only organization right now that is activated in our county other than local volunteers.
So what would they, they could answer some of that?
They might be able, if they have a, or their insurance company. If their insurance company covers some kind of a store or something.
Yeah, most of them haven't had that conversation with the insurance company.
Right. Right now, we're strictly under the Red Cross and our local volunteers. And when I say volunteers, I don't mean the fire department, I mean your neighbors and those wanting to help.
So I'm going to ask this question because I'm going to be going back out. If they need containers, can they go find them and just keep track of the receipts and then if they, if they do pay, they would take care of that for them? Just tell them to keep receipts for anything they do?
It's a potential, I would always, I don't know if it's covered.
I know, I'm not making any promise, I'm just trying to help.
Yeah, and I would, I would advise them to keep their receipts as a potential for reimbursement.
But I would sooner see them go try to find something on their own versus bringing them in, this doesn't count.
Right.
Right?
Exactly.
Especially we got a lot of rain and storms.
I know. It's a whole week, almost every day it's supposed to rain except today.
Yeah.
Somebody might have a semi trailer somewhere and they can just rest up in. Some of them doing that already, but.
And that is something that I can request at the, and I can.
But I heard that at every place.
Okay.
Storage, something for storage because their buildings are gone.
And I can reach out to some of our state assets and see if there's something that maybe we can.
Yeah, maybe there's something available, we ain't aware.
Right, so I'll do some checking on the end and see.
Or get somebody else, because you guys got a lot going on. Please don't be afraid to delegate.
Yeah.
You know, get somebody in charge, would you take care of this?
I'm on the board at West Central, do you want me to go out and talk to them about this recovery center?
If you could, yeah.
That'd be great, Charlie.
I'll do that after this meeting.
Okay, yeah, just make them aware and see if that's actually still covered.
Okay.
Yeah. With, we're, and then just to let everybody know, we are, so we're, there's phases of a disaster. So there's, we're obviously in the emergency phase where we're still responding to all the emergency situations. And now we're kind of transitioning into the recovery phase where everybody's trying to get back to whatever normal is and that's going to take time. So we have a group of people put together that are going to be working to get attached volunteers with people who are affected to help get them back to normal. And we're, I'm a part of that group. There's a lot of stakeholders in that that are working very hard to do that. And there will be messaging and then sent out about efforts to connect the volunteers with those who need help coming up soon. It's, it's just been a process because we've, we haven't, fortunately and unfortunately, we haven't had to deal with this magnitude of an incident in the past, so we've, we're kind of relearning a lot of this.
Totally.
So it's, and we have all the people at the table and are working as fast as we can, but we just want to make sure it was done the right way. So that's kind of where.
And there's some things already arising from our disaster plans that we have in place.
Correct.
As far as how the primary work.
Right, yes, that's correct. And we, and we were just talking about at a meeting this morning with some of the people that are working on the recovery side of it. The state is requiring over the next five years that we have recovery plans in place. This is the first time that they've done that. Of course, they would do that and then we would have something that would require a recovery plan that we don't have developed yet. So I have them all in draft form, but they're not, they're not adopted yet. So we're going to be writing these as we're learning it. So we're going to, this is something that's going to build us to make us stronger in the future, yeah. But we're learning it as we're going. But yeah, we do have a lot of the destruction and everything broken up, we just have, we're putting people in those places now.
So what do you need from us now?
Right now, I need the disaster declaration from you guys so I can submit that up to the state and then really just the.
And maybe get into a little bit, what are you doing for volunteers right now?
So right now, yeah, so right now, we're, we're going to be gridding out the path of the tornado, that touchdown, maybe multiple, depending on the National Weather, three that the National Weather Service had done. And then we're going to be sending out volunteer groups to the grids and we're going to be assigning leads for each grid. And then we're going to be contacting people to go to each grid and get ahold of people in there to see if they need the help. Just to, to try to do it that way, because we don't want to just blast and send people out to one spot and then have someone else not have any help or just have.
Right.
Too many in one spot or just go into a lot of different places.
Because by talking to the farmers out there, then they're, one of their number one concerns priorities besides living, you know, their house, is getting the fields picked up because within the next 14 days, you know, they're hopeful, it dries up and they're going to be out in the field. And so they're asking for UTVs, four-wheelers, small carts, hang people on foot, start going out. We got what, 38 square miles? But do not go on anybody's property without talking to them. They were very stern about that. They want to be involved. They don't want trucks, tractors, stuff going out in their fields. A lot of them are either planted or ready to be planted into, because most people no-till anymore. And so you've got to be very respectful, even though you're there helping. And they said if there's some big objects, I mean, that's just going to take a loader or something, you let them out there, don't drag them through the field. They'll, they'll work around it for now, that'd be something down the road.
Right. And then, so yeah, we're, we're working on that. We had an influx of volunteers and people that wanted to help, which is a great thing. And we're just trying to keep that volunteerism, but also give them somewhere to go and do something. So I know Megan's going to be working on that and with the help of a lot of other people. And I know we're targeting to get a lot of that work done this week. So we'll be sending our messages with that and we'll just need help getting that message out.
So if a victim needs something, I can't answer it, who, should they call all the comm center or who should they call?
For right now.
I'm talking right now.
Right now, they can call the comm center at 755-5160 and just ask for information and we'll get you to somebody who can answer it. We're going to be setting, setting up a phone bank system hopefully to, for people to answer those questions. That's aside from just because we're on an hour and one to go, we might not be able to talk to you right then. So we're going to try to move that eventually, but that's what we have for right now.
When they get a recovery center set up, could they call there for some of this?
That's what they would, probably will when they get set up, yeah. Will that get put out like radio, newspaper or website?
So it'll probably, ideally, it'll go through all those and then I'm going to be using Alert Iowa heavily. So if you're not already signed up for Alert Iowa, that's on our website and our Facebook page. Get on there and sign up for it because we're putting a lot of messaging out there now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Tony, did you have a question?
I was just curious if there's going to be one place that a person could go to try to get all this information as it's done. So if I'm someone that needs help or I want to volunteer or I want to know who to call about certain things, maybe a Facebook page or a website or so on, that's just kind of a directory of all the resources in one spot?
So we have it on our Facebook page and we're doing our best to pin it on the top of our Facebook page. It's all at the top and that's the Shelby County Emergency Management Facebook page. We can also put it up on our website also, but that's, that's where we've been posting it so far.
Maybe one place you can refer people to go to to find out all the things, if they're not getting the messages or whatever.
Yeah.
The county website.
Yeah.
Yep. So and you need to get on the radio because most people listen to the radio.
Yeah, we, well, we tried to, we called the radio if we could, you know, some of them weren't. We don't staff the radio on weekends, so we couldn't get on there, some of them.
Are we going to address the landfill now? Yeah, we will. I was going to ask, like Todd, like during COVID, when you'd set up that resource, is there anything we could like overlap with that that would help that you'd have in place or?
Well, yeah, I mean, first of all, just working with, you know, we'll get all that information out like we did. We were doing daily updates, you know, like at 3:00 in the afternoon. We can do that for the next few days, you know, as, as they feed me the information, we'll get that done. And then in addition to that, it would take me probably a couple of hours, but if, when you, West Central wants to start setting up, if they need to set up a phone bank of any kind, I have one. So it would just take me a couple of hours to get it set back up. So we, we have that option too if they decide they need a phone bank.
Okay. Chris? Why don't you grab a chair and come up here? Because, okay.
I have one.
I want you to stay up here too.
Yeah, I have one thing before we talk about the storm. And it's not something easy to get figured out right now, but it's something that I've had a lot of conversations about in the last couple of days. I don't know if it's, we can't address it today, but the storm chasers. That's something, and I don't know if that's something you guys can just advocate about or what, but storm chasers are, can be very useful and they can help a lot as far as notifying people of where the storm is. However, there are some who impede things. And we had a lot of problems this past time with people who were not acting responsibly and almost wrecked into emergency vehicles. So they're dangerous, being very dangerous, even to the point of passing deputies and fire, fire trucks with their lights and sirens on. But when you're responding to a call or doing something, you're not going to pull somebody over who's passing you. You know, it's just, I don't know how you fix it, but it's something that I wanted to address publicly, that, that, that doesn't help anybody. I understand that people want to see it and it's an exciting thing, but use your common sense and don't create another emergency on top of something that's already happening. It's not, it doesn't help.
Yeah, by watching some of those videos that are almost, and listening to them, they almost felt like they were entitled above everybody.
And, and I want to say, there are some, there, the vast majority of people who go out and storm spot and do those things are responsible people. And, and do it in a safe way, the safest you can be for a storm spotting, but, and don't impede the emergency. It's the ones who do impede the emergency that, that are creating the issue and those are the ones that I want to address, that we need to find a way to.
I'll reach out to some state people. This isn't a county issue, this is.
It's just, yeah, it is.
It's a safety state issue.
Yeah.
We had that problem on 59 when I was out there working.
Yeah, and so I was going to say along with that, there's sightseers, I mean, it slowed stuff down a lot.
It was ridiculous.
I had semis coming in and out of my place and they had to slow down because cars were just, cars running up and down the highway with sundermans in my place, volunteers helping. And just the sightseers going through just slowed things down so much, you know? It was really a problem. Matt's father about got hit by a sightseer. He was helping landfills and we just, man, people got to just stay out of the road for a while, you know?
Just create another hazard is all it does.
Right.
For people that are already in a state of shock and you know.
Exactly.
Well, I can tell you, I followed that storm from basically Minden to the Crawford line and I probably interacted or passed 70 different storm chasers.
70?
Yes.
Wow.
It got to the point where I, me and our deputy, I drove in the wrong lane and he drove in the right lane and we just blocked them from going around us. That's where it got to. Now, some of them are legitimate, highly trained, well-paid, they livestream the Fox Weather and stuff like that. And then there was, there was just cars from Nebraska with mom and kids in there just chasing a frigging tornado.
Not an ideal situation.
No.
Okay, the next issue we need to start talking about, I don't think we're getting anything solved, but when I was out at places yesterday, there was going to be a lot of garbage debris coming to the landfill. And remember, a landfill.
Is a transfer station.
Is a transfer station, not a dump station. And so we just can't take five acres out of the landfill, out of the field and start dumping it. And when they're talking rain every day, because after the truck dumps it, they're going to be sitting there.
And we're also limited by the DNR as to what can be laying outside at the landfill.
And sounds like that, some of that might get lifted?
Correct. Once we're in the disaster declaration, some of those, I don't know, I don't have an exact list of what, but some of those regulations will get lifted. And I think with the meetings that I've had in the last couple of days, I think the best thing to do would be to request some DNR assets to come out and just give us insight on what we should do as far as where we should, you know, give us their advice on what we should, where we should dump stuff, where, what we can leave, what we can't leave, you know?
Something, yeah, because I don't know what they'll come up with as far as that.
I mean, because I seen side dumps, ready to come to the landfill today, but if they come there, they really can't dump and.
And, yeah, and that's, that's no different than normal. I mean, it's our normal mode of operations, anything of that size goes directly to Carroll anyway.
So do people just, when you tell them that, they just take it up there?
Right, yeah. Generally, generally, we always advise them to call up and, and tell them they are coming.
Okay.
But they can go in, weigh, dump, and out they pay and out they go, so.
And then should they keep track of that, the fees that are part of that?
Most definitely. I would save all your tickets and then if you, if you pay to have a truck or, or your mileage or however you figure it, I would make a note and.
Because I think, guys, we need to get, we need to get information out there about that, that if you have any side dumps, and I'll start relaying that when I go and talk to the victims.
Right.
They have side dumps, they need to be, how do they get ahold of Carroll Recycling?
They have the Carroll County landfill and I don't have that number for you, Steve. I can't do that.
Or can they, can they just go up there?
Yeah, it's open.
Okay.
And the only thing is some days they close due to, if there's severe wind, she will close early. That's why I do recommend just.
Or could you let them know there could be stuff coming?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And find out how long they stay open?
I'll call up and tell them.
And text me that or something, I can relay the messages as I go out?
Yeah, because it's, and it's, you know, at that point, they have it all loaded, it's ready to go. If they bring it to us, even if we have a separate pile, you dump it, all we're going to have to do is reload it.
I know.
Side dump again and, and remove it. So, yeah, it's just going to be a.
So the next, the next problem I see is within the next two weeks, weather permitting, there's going to be a mass cleanup of the fields. It's going to bring, and all that stuff is going to be debris that's going to go, so without inundating the landfill or, or, most people are going to have side dumps right there at the road. Can we, can we start, I'm not saying we should do this, I'm just thinking out loud, getting a conversation, but can we start having people bring everything to the rogue ditches and then we start picking that up later? Because the number one priority is a farmer getting it out of the fields.
I understand, but then what happens as far as the, the disaster thing? The same thing, you have it loaded, now we dump it in the hole or dump it in the ditch. Who's responsible to reload and is the county, does the county want to eat that money if we don't get reimbursed through the state of Iowa or whatever? Where generally the farmer, I would assume if they pick it up, it all runs through their insurance.
Yeah, but the farmer ain't gonna be picking it up. It's gonna be volunteers picking it up. We have, we have to find, if it's not gonna be the rogue ditches, I'm not saying it should be, but if it's not gonna be, we have to find a place for this stuff temporarily because that's not a priority when you go to the victim's place, piles, or maybe we tell them to keep the garbage at their place for a while.
Right, that's, yeah, that's something that's gonna have to be going forward depending on the route of what-
We have to make some decisions here.
They don't have the best option for now.
That's, that's what I think.
But when, but the rogue ditch, I mean, the fields, where are they gonna go with that? There's gonna be a lot of stuff out there, guys.
Oh, there is.
Yeah, there, I've seen it already.
And I think that's where, and I can find an answer today. I can call the DNR and maybe some surrounding markets that's in surrounding counties that have been through this and just see what they've done with that debris in the fields.
Because, because there's quite a few farmers that even have side dumps. They might be starting to volunteer if they had, we could have them go to somewhere. Then we're gonna need loaders. And I'm also, I'm also asking the towns, if you have extra trucks, because even in small towns, they have trucks, they have loaders, they have skid loaders. Somebody needs to organize what's accessible, what they're willing to donate and what days, you know, and then they're gonna have to have a body in them, but this is not just a county issue here, you know? And the, a lot of the county stuff, not all, but a lot of it, we're picking up our rogue ditches right now.
Right.
Hauling rock out to the roads where, because we had two and a half inches of rain in a lot of places.
A lot of that metal's clean that could go to recycling, right?
Yeah, but when you start bringing it out of the fields, remember, it's gonna get thrown in one big pile. They're not-
There's gonna be two chunks of two by four.
Oh, yeah.
Each town has assets.
Yeah, we're just asking, if somebody's willing to come over and organize that.
Our chiefs, find out if there's anything available. That'd probably be the easiest for them.
Yeah, if somebody could, would be interested in organizing that and I know that they're on- Not you guys.
They're on your list though.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me reach out to some of my contacts and just see what, what options have been, or what things have been done in the past that-
That's what, that's what we really need to know is what-
What other counties have done?
What, what is, I don't want to say reimbursable because that's not the most important thing, but how do we make sure everything flows through and everything works out for the best of everyone here?
Yeah, because I, I think if, like again, at the farmsteads, they could keep the piles there for the time being. And then maybe down the road, we could even help once we know what we got, if people volunteers or we can get side dumps coming to their place and help load up or something.
Yeah, and see how many, you know, how many have burnt pits or what happens to them.
Coming out of the fields, I see that as a big issue that there's gonna have to be piles made along fences or something. And I know it's gonna be rogue ditches.
Here's the other thing you're gonna have to remember with these piles is we just kicked off storm season. These piles, if we don't take care of them soon, are going to end up right back in the fields.
I know, it doesn't sound good for tomorrow too.
Correct.
And that's another thing, back to the landfill, that's another thing I'm a little concerned about now. We lost all the roll doors in all the buildings, so the buildings are completely open. We get a bunch of wind coming through, I mean, we're gonna have to try and keep our amounts of normal trash to a minimum. Or it's gonna, it'll end up reloused tomorrow, so.
Yeah. Are you able to have, whether it's a volunteer or somebody, or somebody knows a volunteer to help us as stuff starts coming in out there, if it's full truck loads, just tell them that this needs to go to Carroll or-
And I don't know so far yet. It hasn't been too bad this morning. Generally, the scale gals will, they're pretty good about that. I mean, just on the speed, they can say, hey, we can't, we can't handle that. The guy's on the floor too. I mean, it's, it works pretty well. Just, I guess we play it by ear here for a little bit and see.
They probably still think you're closed.
It should be on the radio. We are open.
Yeah, because that was, that was one of the first questions yesterday, but most people was landfill gonna be open? And then you had to remind them, you know, it's not a dump off station.
We took, we took damage also on the buildings. I'm fairly surprised the one building is there yet.
Wow.
So, yeah, it, it got a little windy up there, I think, so, you know? I just appreciate everybody's cooperation on that too. We'll do everything we can, but again, we're still just transfers, so.
Okay, well, if you could, I know you got a lot going on, but if you could give, find out what some of the other counties have done and then send an email out to us, please, Chris, on some suggestions and we're gonna have to make some decisions.
Yeah, we'll put them forward. Do you want me just to read the Carroll landfill number? So everybody's got it?
Yeah.
Okay, Carroll County landfill.
Okay.
Are we ready? Seven one two, seven nine two, five zero, zero, one.
Okay. Gene, do you have any suggestions? I mean, you guys have had storm things here in town. I know when I worked with you guys and organized things and, and what kind of response you got from the outlying other communities or counties? Do you have any suggestions?
We work, obviously coordinate with the EMA being our countywide resource. We would be one of, I guess, multiple assets that could be requested. Was in touch with Alex this weekend. I think it's a matter of getting information out properly to all the, all the entities. I think from my lens, just the bit I've been aware of is where people go for information. And I would say that is always a number one challenge in the environment we live in today.
Right.
Because information's abound and what's accurate information? My understanding is, and I guess Alex, you confirmed this, is that the EMA Facebook page is the central source of information. Is that where people should be directed?
That's correct.
So I, I think that, I believe that you're getting accurate information on many of the things you just discussed or were discussed. I would say that, that being number one and number two is for those volunteers as well as other community assets, again, City of Harlem being one. Instead of, we, we would be, all those groups, both volunteers and other municipals, they need to have a coordinated direction as to where to go. So you don't need, for example, the City of Harlem can certainly help out with, be it equipment, staff, yet we would, we would hamper efforts that we were just doing, doing that one off.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
So I believe that's part of, this is part of this discussion process. So I'd say those are the two main things would be, central source of information is reliable, where to point people. And the second is utilizing those assets, be it, again, personnel, equipment, going through a central source versus free range.
Yep. Yeah. Who would be a good person as far as reaching out to municipalities? You know?
I've got somebody I can put on there.
Could you? Okay, okay. We need somebody just to be in charge of that, what, what would be available, when, I'm not talking today, you know, but, because this is, this is gonna be a long recovery here, but at least, by talking to the victims, there, there's two, three priorities they have. And one of them was storage, getting stuff out of the fields besides their family and home. I thought that's taken for granted. But it's, you know, picking up all the trees, not a huge priority, but they're looking at their livelihood here in the next couple of weeks.
I've got, I'll have my EMS staff reach out to every city today and find out what they have and when they can utilize it.
Okay. I really think the biggest challenge of coordination is going to be the pickups in the fields because when they come to the roads with the stuff, they're gonna, somebody's gonna have to tell them where to go. It'd almost be nice if we had trucks there with skid loaders and loaders that they'd dump the stuff in those, you know, skid loader, loader and put it right into trucks, you know? Especially if they're going to different sections. That would be ideal, but getting all that coordinated.
Well, and I'm wondering if we can use like Western Engineering-
That way you don't pick it up again.
The weekend or something. They've got a ton of machinery.
Yeah, because I would gear a lot of stuff for those weekend guys because they're talking rain, except for today. Almost every day is duffed till Friday. And I'd seen it out yesterday, as soon as the rain starts coming, the volunteers and everybody, which nobody wants to be out in that. It's a mess and can't be out in the fields anymore.
It's not good anyway. It just causes more damage there.
Yeah, so I'm gonna say from about Friday, Saturday this week into next week, next week is gonna be an area if we could focus on trying to get the fields picked up, you know, with the weather cooperating and stuff. Give us some time. That's just me, just conversations. You've been through it.
A lot of these farms got tractors when we were picking up.
Maybe.
Well, not all of them.
Yeah.
But we had two trailers out when I was working Saturday and they put the stuff into the trailers and they took it out to the farm.
And just getting out, you know, we could use the UTVs four-wheelers and the little carts behind them. There's a lot of them around. You know, even people in the city and stuff, so just letting them know this is coming here in the next week or so.
Yeah, and I know the group that's working with the volunteers and everything, we're gonna be getting that message out and working to coordinate a lot of that, so.
Then you give us some feedback on what you're hearing here, how we can do some of this. So I hope you don't get too inundated out there.
It'll be all right. I think, I think we'll make it through. I hope.
Okay, well then we're gonna move on here. All comes out in the worst. Mark, would you read the declaration?
Yes, Shelby County had a tornado and severe thunderstorm that occurred on April twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, causing severe damage to public and private property, disruption of utility service and endangerment of health and safety of the citizens of Shelby County. Therefore, the Shelby County Board of Supervisors have declared a state of emergency authorized under state statute that will execute the expenditure of emergency funds from all available sources to invoking of mutual aid agreements and applying to the state of Iowa for assistance.
Okay, do you need to add anything to that language that you guys feel?
No, no, this is the one that we've used in the, in the past for all of our previous declarations, so.
Okay, okay. Do you have a motion for that?
No.
Seconded by Charlie, seconded by Bryce. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Anything else? This week sometime, if you feel the different people that might be heading things, we need to get everybody together, which I think would probably be a good idea, please let me know and get some people in on that.
Okay, we'll be, and I'll certainly-
It's gonna take a lot of people's efforts. Again, please everybody be patient. Everybody's trying to do-
I just want to say one thing. I made one phone call on Friday night to Maverick Roofing Desk. They come button my roof up because I had water coming in. Other than that, I had an army out there. They just showed up. I mean, I didn't have to do anything except point fingers. It was amazing. The people we have in this community, my neighbors. A guy came from Correctionville-
Oh, wow.
With a skid loader. I'm like, who are you? Oh, I went through it one time, unloaded it, just loading side dumps. I mean, I don't have any junk left in my place. My trees are piled.
That's amazing.
Just blows you away.
People can really be great to each other and we live in a great county. I'm not gonna say we don't.
People will do it. It's our job to get it, make it organized.
The people we have in this county, we're gonna get to this easily. I appreciate it, everybody. I mean-
Does anybody else have anything to say? Jim, you have anything to add? Gene?
The tremendous, the tremendous outpouring of support, again, it's testament to what we take for granted in situations like this, that that really does shine. The, another item that's been asked is for supplies. I've been made aware that there might, there have been different volunteer organizations, maybe churches, a couple of businesses where supplies maybe are being dropped off. How is that going to be managed or just let that continue to just be organic as it is?
Can the Red Cross handle it?
The Red Cross hasn't done much with that. They've been kind of focused on that. They, they do some if you call and request it, but they haven't done much with like donation management. I, we were discussing that this morning on how that could be managed and I don't, the quick answer is I don't know how we're gonna do that moving forward, but that is in discussion however, the best way we're gonna do it moving forward.
Another thing, your guys that are reaching out to municipalities as far as, they might want to also reach out, if they could, somebody could, to the churches in all the communities. Most of them have some kind of parish center. And maybe we could have some different drop-off points, you know, because this tornado, the way it went through, it's, all these communities are probably within five miles of that, an area there, you know? So whether it was in Erling or Panama or wherever, you know, doesn't all have to be in Harlan or one site, you know? Reach out to them. They want to help, you know, especially a lot of these halls, you know, they don't have a lot of activities going on. If they have activities, yeah, they ain't gonna be the one, but the next one might, so.
Yeah, we have, for example, I believe everyone's vividly aware, there are two larger centers right here in the county seat here in Harlan. For example, Vets Auditorium in Turkleson that are a part of that asset inventory that, those are sites that are needed. Just reach out to me and coordinate with our manager of those sites.
Have somebody-
There are other events that are planned there, but we have to work around those things, but-
And if somebody's, thinks they could, they could say, yeah, we could be one of those centers and ask them if they'd have some volunteers to man it, you know? You've got to delegate out here. And a lot of the volunteers, you know, in the rescue or fire, they're, they're good at that, you know? Give them some responsibility to, to get some of their communities involved to handle that part of it, you know? It just doesn't have to be everybody on foot out in fields.
No, yeah.
More work is important.
Yeah.
So, okay, if anybody has any other thoughts or something afterwards, please give me a call or something, or Alex. But I just don't want to put any more necessary on these few guys. They're the glue. They have a lot going on that everybody else can help, help with. And Megan, maybe just say just a little bit of what you're working on.
Um, yep, so I'm just assisting Alex and Jordan with volunteer efforts, talking with property owners and finding out what kind of damages they still have and cleanup they still have to get cleaned up and stuff. And then matchmaking volunteers to property owners. Like Alex said earlier, we're just, we're trying to figure out a donation center or a couple and who can man it and be in charge of something like that, so we'll be reaching out to, you know, like Gene said, the city and maybe some of the churches here in town to kind of help out with that.
Charlie, when you go out to West Central, maybe they, they won't know now, but when they do set up that center, if they had a list of things that way, they know what resources are gonna be for, you know? So people kind of got an idea, but I'm just gonna tell everybody, if you get bills, you know, any kind of receipts, keep them. Insurance will take care of it. Maybe this can't. We're not making a promise.
I would, I would say take pictures of everything you can. That's another, whether it's state or FEMA or your insurance or whatever.
I know that West Central was down in Mills County helping flood recovery there and they handle just about everything down in there. So they're experienced in this, so.
Yeah, it's tough right now because everybody wants to, and we've had like three days now, but everybody wants to clean up. They want to get done.
The two are nature. They're gonna be all the way.
I know.
This ain't gonna be a hurry yet.
It doesn't fly that way sometimes.
This is a priority. Okay, what's a priority?
Yeah.
And, and as an example of sharing some of the resources, Jordan and Megan were in this morning and we're gonna help them find addresses and contact information for people from some of our records and maybe work through their spreadsheets and clean it up and so on, so they can work on the frontline and we'll, you know, we'll handle some of the administrative stuff in the background. So use the resources you guys have. We're here to help.
And then Mark, would you, would you send a reminder out to all our departments that anything storm related, they keep track of it? And if people contact them, make sure that they need help with something, that, that's a priority, okay?
And I mean, anything, fuel, trash bags, extra gloves, anything that you acquire to use from this, keep track of, anything.
Okay, it's good reminders. Again, thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. And again, if we need to hold some special meetings, please let me know. And I, I think we do need a few just to give updates. Communication is either gonna make this thing really work good or it's gonna, I'm not gonna say fail, but not be as productive.
Correct. Be sure to send updates to you guys over the basis and be good together.
Okay, okay. Thanks, everybody. Well, like Bryce said, we'll, we'll pull through this. Just gotta get it all organized. Okay, thanks. Meeting is starting. Thanks, everybody. Okay, thanks, meeting is adjourned, thanks, everybody.
Yeah, I'll leave.
Please.